All right. Noting the hour of seven o'clock in the presence of a quorum, I will call this meeting to order. Good evening, it is 7:00 PM. This open meeting of the Acton Finance Committee concurrent with the Board of Selectmen meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and the local state of emergency declared by the Acton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, the Board of Selectmen has suspended all public gatherings, and in accordance with the Governor's order, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Governor's order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations and/or committee votes of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. I do not remember whether this will or not feature public comment. Mr. Benson, will it?
Yeah, we're not, there is no citizen participation.
This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting is convened via video conference via Zoom app as posted on the meeting agenda at Town's website calendar identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda if applicable. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote.
Okay, so I will open the Board of Selectmen's side of the joint meeting now. The Town of Acton, in response to the coronavirus pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Acton Board of Health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC. The town hall is closed to the public. This meeting will be streamed online on the Acton TV YouTube live channel, and audio will be broadcast live on radio WAEM 94.9 FM. To participate remotely from a computer, use the link to join the public meeting actonma.gov/meeting/BOS, or from a telephone dial 646-876 and enter webinar ID 503-918-785. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak. Computer and app users may use the raise the hand feature to request to speak. But by prior agreement with Ms. Anderson, John Mangiarotti will make his presentation. Then Kristi will entertain comments and questions from members of the Finance Committee. Following the completion of that round, I will entertain comments and questions from members of the Board of Selectmen. And if there's any further follow-up, Kristi will call on those people on either board who wishes to speak. So, John, please.
Thank you very much, members of the Board of Selectmen, members of the Finance Committee. Thank you for joining this virtual meeting to have our presentation of the Town of Acton's very first long-range capital improvement plan. We're pleased to be presenting this information tonight and know that it'll be valuable for this budget season, but even more so, this is a tool that we will use year-over-year to continue our long-term view on our financial investment needs and help us plan for sustained operations and capital over the long term. So, the presentation tonight will be going over the document that we published first on March 2nd of this year. And to start it off, I'm going to introduce the team that worked with us to put this together this year. Sarah Concanon and Tony Turisi from the Collins Center at University of Massachusetts. We received a grant through our work through the Community Compact Program from the state. We received the $25,000 grant to select someone to work with us on a long-term capital plan, and the Collins Center was the team, is the team that we chose, and we worked very well together over the last six months or so, and here we are tonight. Sarah, thanks for all your help, and please, take it away.
Thank you, John, and thank you to the Board and the Finance Committee for coming together tonight to hear our presentation. I am going to share my screen with you all so that we can all see the presentation. See here. All right, you should all be looking at my presentation here now, so I'll move ahead. If you can't for some reason, just let me know.
We're seeing the presenter view.
Oh, let's see. Let's try again. How does that look?
It's still the presenter view. I think there's that under this, I don't have PowerPoint open, but under the slideshow menu thing, there's a, you can swap monitors, and that might work for you.
Let me try this. Is that bad?
Yes, that's it.
That's better, okay. I unplugged my secondary screen in case anybody wants a tip for the future. Sorry about that. So, anyway, now you should be seeing my presentation. And so, tonight, as John said, we are presenting sort of the work that the Collins Center has done over the last six months with town leadership on producing a long-term capital plan. So, first, I just want to introduce the Collins Center for those of you who don't know, and I'll introduce myself, and I'll ask my colleague Tony to introduce himself. So, the Collins Center, full name, the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. And we were established by the state legislature in 2008 in order to provide technical assistance and consulting services to cities and towns in the Commonwealth, and we also work with school districts, state agencies, and some municipalities outside of the Commonwealth in other New England states. And as John said, my name is Sarah Concanon. I have been working with the Collins Center for the last almost nine years, and I've done a lot of different things at the Collins Center, but for the last two to three years, I have been managing the finance practice. The finance practice at the Collins Center is one of our most robust practice areas. We do everything from capital planning to budgeting work. We do financial policies, financial structure review, financial forecasting. And one of my wonderful colleagues on that team is Tony Turisi, and I'll ask him if he could unmute and introduce himself.
Okay. All right, am I coming through?
Yeah.
My name is Tony Turisi. For the last, oh, about 10 years or so, I've been working with the UMass Boston Collins Center. My focus is on financial management and practices, particularly in the area of capital improvement programming, financial forecasting, and financial management policies. Prior to that, my whole government career has been in local government in Massachusetts. I was the Finance and Budget Director for the Town of Andover for approximately 32 years. Prior to that, I was the Budget Analyst in the City of Woodster, and before that, I started my career in the Town of Andover.
Thank you, Tony. So, as John said, the Town received a best practices grant to complete this work, and we know that Acton had already had a foundation of a capital plan, but we wanted to kind of expand it, build on it, so that it was a little bit more dynamic, a lot more context, a lot more information put out there for the public, and of course, as John said, we wanted to expand it to be a 10-year timeframe. And so, the Collins Center, our expertise is really coming on board, working hand-in-hand with our clients to kind of rethink the whole process. And so, what we did with John and Stephen Barrett and his team was really work to say, okay, what is the next step for the Town? Because you've already got a great capital plan, but how do we bring it to the next level? So, I want to give a little bit of context, and so first, I'll give some definitions just for folks who may be watching at home. We could talk about the process, and then I'm going to walk you through what we actually have done over the last six months. So, a capital plan really is a plan for funding specific capital projects, and it's important that the Town have a definition of what is a capital project. Most places would define it as a major non-recurring expense that has a particular cost and a particular lifespan. A lot of times for a Town, we set that level at $10,000, sometimes a little bit higher, with a useful life of at least five years. A capital improvement plan, or a CIP, is taking all of the information about the capital projects that you want to fund and putting it all into one place, one plan. It should be multi-year. In your case, we wanted to move it from five years to 10 years. It should be comprehensive, so that it includes not only all the departments across the Town, but also all the funding sources, whether you're using tax dollars or whether you're using non-local sources like grants and things like that. We want to be able to explain to residents and other stakeholders what the full picture of investment is in the Town. And the final piece of it, which is important, is that it has to be financially viable. So, you can't just have a wish list of all the things you wish you could do if you had unlimited money, because the fact of the matter is, is that you've got limited resources, every municipality does, and so it's important that the plan that we produce is financially viable. So, why do people do capital planning? Well, it's not simply because it's a best practice that the state says you should do or that a credit rating agency says you should do. Those are important pieces, but really, you do capital planning so that, you know, there's no threat to public health or public safety. You want your buildings to be in good condition, you want your roads to be safe, you want your sidewalks to be walkable and pleasant to be on. So, you can protect public health and public safety, you limit your exposure to any legal liability from having assets not in working order. You can really, projects should really improve your staff's efficiency and effectiveness at their jobs, whether that's through having a particular piece of equipment or having a vehicle that runs on time and works well. You can also avoid costly emergency repairs. You know, you should be planning so that a vehicle doesn't, a plow doesn't fail, a dump truck doesn't fail in the middle of snow and ice season. It also helps you avoid poorly managed or poorly timed projects. You know, the sort of classic example is paving a road and then three years later ripping it up to fix a water main. You really don't want to do that. It's not a good way to use your money. And so, a long-term CIP helps you phase projects so that that sort of thing doesn't happen. It also helps you plan for consistent debt service, which is really helpful for budgeting, you know, operating. And then, it has positive impacts on your bond rating, can protect your AAA rating. All right, so, capital planning as a process is an ongoing annual process, the same way that you do your annual operating budget process. In fact, the two are very closely intertwined. So, this graphic sort of succinctly shows the process, the ideal process that the Town will follow and has been following when it comes to capital planning. So, first, you know, July 1st is the start of your fiscal year, you all know that, and really, on an ongoing basis, the Town Leadership is monitoring all of the capital projects that are underway. You know, you approved a CIP last year, so this year, you're making sure the vehicle is purchased, the road is paved, and so on. In the fall, the departments are asked to submit the capital project that they have, and then in October, you have the Hill where you come together and spend time kind of peer of, presenting the capital projects, peer reviewing what others are asking to do, and there's also some other operating budget tasks happening along this timeframe that I, that I'll just kind of skip over. But once we have the Hill, the Town Manager will take all their requests and sort of assess them for how well they meet the goals of the Town, how affordable they are in terms of the resources available, and so on. And then sometime in December would be the time where preliminary CIP along with operating budget is presented to the Board. And then, there may be Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee workshops with budget workshops with the Town Manager and the department heads to review the requests, talk through them, and so on. In February/March timeframe, a lot of review continues to happen until finally a CIP along with an operating budget are finalized, and eventually those, oh, I should say that the CIP, the long-term CIP is finalized. A piece of that, which is the upcoming fiscal year's capital budget, is what actually goes to Town Meeting in April and is voted. So, the Collins Center has a process that's essentially divided into three phases, and I'm going to walk you through sort of what we did and the results of each phase that we went through. So, the first phase is what we call the Capital Needs Assessment. Our first step is to really get to know the Town and find out, well, what, you know, what capital assets do you have in Town that you're responsible for? This list is really high-level summary of the things that we talked with staff about. So, you've got all these Town Buildings, more than a dozen Town Buildings that you're responsible for, from public safety facility, a town hall, a DPW yard. You also have proportionate responsibility for school facilities and any associated components like athletic fields or parking lots. We've got IT assets like computers and tablets and network components. There are dozens of parks and rec sites like playgrounds and ballfields and trails and a pond with beach. We also have 112 miles of roadway and many miles of sidewalks in Town, 17 bridges and major culverts, which is a lot, and many other smaller culverts, and a small sewer system that you all have, and stormwater infrastructure such as catch basins and pipes and outfalls and things like that. And then, of course, many different types of vehicles and equipment from small pieces like a trailer or a sedan or a van to police cruisers and fire engines and other heavy construction equipment like loaders and things like that. So, there's a lot. So, essentially, what we do is, after we learn about what's out there, we talk with each department head and give them access to an electronic form where they can submit all the various projects that they think are most important for their department over the ensuing 10 years. And so, this table summarizes the results of that sort of process. There were 123 projects that were requested, and they totaled 68 million. It includes projects with potential non-local funding sources like state grants and things like that. The DPW accounted for 42% of the entire total cost. That would, that would be including a new facility, so that's a substantial cost there. And other municipal facilities accounted for 20%. That's from the Municipal Facilities Department, rather. This table just summarizes the same information but by asset type, and so you can see here that vehicles and equipment are a significant portion of the requests. They were almost 40% of all of the total number of projects and about 30% of the total cost. Municipal facilities are another big chunk of the projects. They were 25% of total projects and 20% of the total cost. And then roads and transportation, again, 20% of the total cost. All this information, by the way, is included in the CIP report that was published by the Town, and so further, you know, if you want to go in and kind of dive more deeply into details, you can, you can access it there. All right. So, I, one last thing before we move on to Phase Two. So, Phase One is a process. It takes probably about maybe eight to 10 weeks to go through the whole process from introducing ourselves to department heads, learning about their departments, and all the way through the process. It is, though, just a snapshot in time. So, sometimes, you know, you'll get departments that submit all their projects, and then later we learn, oh, this project needs to change. It needs to change in scope or cost. That can happen, and so, just, just so you're aware, sometimes the, the numbers can look a little bit different, and in particular, for example, the DPW facility cost did change from earlier in the process to later, so there are some shifts in that, in that sense. All right, so Phase Two is developing a capital investment strategy. So, this is the phase where we say, okay, we've got to develop a financially viable plan. How do we do that? The first thing we do at the Collins Center is gather historical spending data. So, we need to know, what have you been spending in the past? How does it sort of stack up to best practice? And do we feel like there's potential for additional investment? Do we want to maintain the level of investment where you're at? Those types of things. So, this table summarizes your historical general fund capital investment. So, we've got your net budget up at the top. Your net budget is your general fund operating budget less your enterprise fund revenue, your excluded, your debt exclusions, and your other available funds, like free cash, things like that. So, that's your net budget. And we look at your, sorry, we look at your non-excluded debt and your free cash spending and your tax levy spending on capital. You can see that right in the middle here, the non-excluded capital investment as a percent of net budget has been somewhere between 1.5% to 2% over the last four years. You also have substantial excluded debt. Now, excluded debt is a little bit different because excluded debt comes with its own dedicated revenue source. You know, if you, if you have a debt exclusion, you're raising that exact amount of money in tax levy to pay for it. So, we consider that to be somewhat separate, but we do report it here as well. So, you've got an additional 2.5 million and then increasing to 5.8 million in FY21, and that kind of boosts your overall investment level up to 4, and then it actually almost doubled to 8% in FY21. So, taking where you were and figuring out how do we develop a strategy that puts you on a road to sort of stability, maybe increasing a little bit, our team worked with the Town Manager and the Finance Director to develop a three-pronged approach to strategic capital investments. So, you've got three major sources of funding. First is your, your operating budget contribution or your tax levy contribution, and what we wanted to do was just stabilize that spending at FY21 levels, which was about 450, a little bit more than 450,000. The second prong is related to free cash, and so we wanted to slowly increase your use of free cash for capital, which is a great use of free cash, by the way, one-time revenue against a one-time expense. We wanted to increase it from FY21 levels, which was 575,000, and over the 10-year period, we add 50,000 to that target until it gets to a little bit over a million in FY31. And then the third component of the plan is to set a target for your non-excluded debt at 1% of net budget. And by setting a target, you can ensure that you'll be able to afford it, but also that, that debt is consistent, and that's really important for budgeting, as I said earlier. Now, the plan is not rigid. You know, resources can be reallocated amongst the three sources as needed without increasing the overall budgetary impact of the general fund. And further, for the strategy, we, you know, we really wanted the Town to ensure, and I think you're already doing this, that any enterprise fund projects are fully funded from their own revenues and that the Town continues to be aggressive in seeking grants and other non-local funding sources. All right. This is a, this is a big table, and I don't want you to pay attention to the detail. Let me walk you through it. This shows 10 years of future, into the future, FY22 through FY31. And in this table, we're basically trying to figure out, okay, given our investment strategy, how much, how much money do we have to spend in each fiscal year? And so, what we do is we project your net budget using your historical growth, so that's 3.64%, so we project your net budget. And then, the chunk in the middle is where we capture what have you already committed to. Now, you've committed to some existing debt service, and you also have a bond issue that was just recently completed, so we've got estimated debt service for that issue. And then, you don't have any other, you know, you haven't already committed tax levy for the future or free cash, and so those lines are blank. We take what you've already committed to, which is your debt service, and compare it to your net budget, and then we compare all of that to the target investment levels that we decided on. So, down at the bottom, you can see we've got target free cash spending, and you can see if it's not too small. It starts at 575K in '22, and then it moves up and up $50,000 a year until it gets to 1.025 million in FY31. You can see the next line is your target operating budget spending, and that is steady at 462,200, which again, is your FY21 level. And then, we calculate how much you have to spend in additional, potential additional debt service, and that is the last line there, target available for new debt service. Again, that's compared to that 1% of net budget target, so we calculate 1%, we subtract the debt service you've already committed to, and that leaves us with available resources. And again, all of this is explained in the report, so if you're interested, you can always go there. This chart summarizes sort of the future of your investment. So, you've got the four years of historical investment. That's sort of the, the stuff on the left, the gold stuff. That's your existing non-excluded debt, how much you've been spending from free cash and tax levy for capital. And then, we've also got your committed debt, so that estimated 2020, 2021 issue, plus your already previously existing debt. Those are the light, the lightest blue. And then, on top of that, we layer in the additional free cash spending and your target new debt service, your target tax levy. And you can see that slowly, your investment starts to grow, and the reason that it grows really is because, number one, we're slowly increasing our free cash investment, and number two, our debt service target is tied to net budget, and as your net budget grows, your resources available for new debt grow as well. So, really, we're seeing a slow and hopefully affordable, we think affordable, investment in capital over time. So, really, we think that this capital investment strategy is good for the Town. First of all, it balances investment across the three main categories, and it reduces an impact if any one, you know, a source of revenue or funds is unavailable for whatever reason. It controls the investment from the tax levies so that tax rate impacts are minimized. And again, the debt service grows with, with net budget growth, but you know, you're, you're using that debt to leverage major projects that you otherwise couldn't afford with, with paying cash. All right. So, Phase Three, the final phase of our work, is developing what we call the Project Plan, and that really just means what specific projects are going to be funded in the capital plan. What we do is, we take all of the results from the Phase One Capital Needs Assessment. We start to look through the projects, and really, this is a Town-led process, you know, assessing the projects, determining what are the highest priorities. Then we take the results of the Phase Two work in developing the investment strategy, and we try to piece them together. We can only afford projects that our, our investment strategy tells us we have the resources to accomplish, and so it's a little bit like a puzzle. Things get, sometimes things get shifted from one year to the next to try to fit with the resources available. So, the, the 10-year CIP Project Plan summary includes 83 projects totaling 75.9 million. And again, that number is different because projects were adjusted post-Phase One, in particular, the DPW facility. So... So this plan includes thirty-three point nine million from the general fund, thirteen point three million from enterprise fund, and more than twenty-eight point seven million from other non-local sources, whether those are federal or state grants, chapter ninety funds, things like that. The investment is really spread across the the different functional units of of town, you know, your different departments. So you can see here, of course, it's dominated by public works. That includes not only the facility, but things like roads and and major projects like Kelly's Corner, which is which is fifteen million in of itself. But you can see there are investments across many departments. This is the same breakdown by asset type. Nearly half the cost is for roads and transportation projects, which includes, as I said, that fifteen million for Kelly's Corner. There are significant municipal facilities projects, including the new DPW facility, which are which collectively are are about twenty-two percent of total cost. And then vehicle replacements across all departments, but in particular, police, fire, and DPW. This is where many of your vehicular assets live are an additional twenty percent of the plan. But we also have investments in sewer and stormwater, parks and rec, and other. Now, other includes a lot of planning and feasibility studies, a shade tree project, public arts, and some sustainability initiatives that are a little bit, that didn't fit in other categories. All right, I'm going to show you two tables. They're they're dense, but I'm going to walk you through them. And again, I don't want you, I don't need you to absorb the detail necessarily. I just want you to make sure that you understand kind of the process we went through. So this first table is the budgetary impact of the plan, but only for years one through five. So the first block of numbers at the top, that just repeats the target investment level from the investment strategy. So that's there just to, for comparison's sake. The middle box is our general fund plan. So we've got general fund free cash. That line tells us how much money the plan asks us to spend from free cash. And the line right below it compares that amount to our target. So you can see that in FY twenty-two, the amount of money in the plan from free cash, the amount of spending from the plan from free cash is five hundred and eighty thousand. It's it actually is a small deficit, five thousand dollars, over where we wanted it to be. The next year, we've got a surplus, eighty thousand. And and so on, you can see. The next middle section of the of this of the middle table there is the tax levy amount. So you can see that we're comparing what's in the plan to that target of four hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred. And you can see we've got a surplus in the first three years, a deficit in the in the fourth year, and a small surplus in the in the fifth. And then we come to debt service. And so again, we're comparing, oops, I apologize. We're comparing the debt service that's in the plan. And what we do is we look at projects that you would most likely fund from debt. We calculate a very conservative debt service. In collaboration, you know, we we looked at the terms that the Collin Center would recommend. We we spoke with town leadership and the and the financial team, and we agreed on a conservative set of debt terms. And by that, I mean the rates. So we we're calculating here a conservative estimate of the debt service for the projects in the plan. We're comparing it with that one percent target. And you can see that in FY twenty-two, we have a small deficit of seventeen thousand, which means we're spending that much more than where we wanted to be. Then we've got a surplus of about fifty thousand in year two, and then deficits in those later years. I'll talk about why in a second. I just wanted to draw your attention to the last line there, total surplus or deficit from all sources. So remember that I said that the plan is not, the investment strategy rather, is not rigid. You can flex resources from one source to another if need if need be. And so here you can see that across the three sources, we've got, we're essentially on target for twenty-two, small, small surplus. We've got a a big surplus in twenty-three, and then a small deficit in twenty-four. Those sort of cancel each other out, and then deficits in twenty-five and twenty-six. What's the deal with the deficits in the later years? Well, a couple of things. Number one, there's the major DPW facility. And that is a project that is a significant cost and is still in sort of preliminary phases, I would say. And so we're using a a number in the plan. We don't know whether it's a number that will ultimately end up being higher or lower than, you know, what you ultimately determine you want to spend on the facility. But it is generating a deficit because of that particular high-cost project. Because it's in the later years of the plan, at this point, it's not a major concern. As that project gets closer and closer to potential fruition, you know, the the town leadership and the finance team will have to consider, does this fit within our investment strategy? How do we make this affordable to the town? But at this point, given that the deficits are really not showing up until year four, we feel that the town's CIP is is reasonable at this point. The last table there at the bottom is the enterprise fund plan. And so you can see the budgetary impact of the enterprise funds. There are PGO, which could be either operating budget, enterprise fund operating budget, or retained earnings, and then annual debt service. This table is the exact same structure, but just reports out what's going on in years six to ten. So those real later years of the plan. You can see that if you go to the the middle table, toward the end, the general fund annual debt service target, we see substantial deficits in those years. And again, that's mostly driven by that DPW facility project. So you will have to address that at some point. But we have worked out substantial surpluses on the free cash side and the operating operating budget side, some surplus. So you have some flexibility there, of course. As I'll mention in my next slide here, long-term capital planning, it is a best practice. It will allow you to prepare better for your future needs. But while your FY twenty-two budget, capital budget is actionable, the midterm and the long-term projects, they're they can be conceptual in nature, and particularly when there are projects that have not been identified yet or projects that are still going through planning and feasibility work. So on an annual basis, this is not a report that you just put on a shelf and you don't look at again until ten years from now. On an annual basis, town leadership will review, pick up the document, go through the process again, just like you do with operating budgets, review the the CIP. Things may change. New information is going to come out of the planning work and the feasibility work. There may be new grant opportunities. There may be new priorities from the board. The CIP is really closely intertwined with strategic planning efforts. And it is really a reflection of the community's values and priorities. And and so, you know, as things change on those fronts, in particular, on 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 your work around sustainability and climate action, those efforts will really inform the CIP. And and again, as you get, as the CIP, projects in the CIP become become closer to fruition, you know, as the years pass, those projects should become clearer and and you'll be able to address any any deficits that you see. All right. So that's the presentation. We really had a great time working with the town. We really appreciate all of the cooperation and help we received from town staff. You know, not only town leadership and the finance team, but but as I said, we met with every single department head via Zoom or or phone, but still meeting them nonetheless. And we got a lot of cooperation and help. And and it's not, you know, it's not easy on their part. It's a lot of time. And in particular, in this year with the pandemic, we just wanted to kind of reiterate how much work staff had had done for us and how helpful that had been. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer questions and listen to comments if you have any.
Sorry, technology problems there. Do we want to have the slides up or do we want to go back to you where we can see everyone?
Is that better?
Thank you. Yes, it's hard to know who wants to speak. I'm going to start with questions from the finance committee. Steve Newington.
Okay, can you hear me? All right. Well, let me say that I've been waiting for this plan for not ten years, but at least seven or eight. And actually participated in at least one or two efforts to do a similar one. So first, let me say it's very good to have a plan. The next thing I'd like to say, it's very good to have a a comprehensive plan, because this is much bigger than anything I've ever seen attempted in the town before. We never talked about vehicles, sidewalks, roads, things like that in the past. A few questions. I have an editorial comment or two, and then one or two substantive comments. Question is, two thousand and fifteen, we had a facility study done, which identified sixteen million dollars worth of just work on buildings. Was that referenced at all in in this study?
So just to jump in, so the the good thing about the work we've done since two thousand and fifteen is that we've tackled a lot of the projects that were identified there. And I think any of the ones that remained from that study are in this ten-year plan. One thing that we're doing this year is updating that facility study. So we'll have more information to inform the next go-around of our ten-year plan.
Yeah, I asked the question, John, just because the, I think in two thousand and twenty-five, there's a study on whether whether we need three fire stations or not. And and that's fine, good. I'd like to see a study done on that. But when you go back to two thousand and fifteen, there were at least two or three million dollars of critical work that needed to be done to those three fire stations. And I want to make sure that we have a a strategy of, I don't want to spend a million dollars on a fire station. We're going to decommission in two thousand and twenty-five. So that's the only reason I bring up the two thousand and fifteen study. What I would have improved in terms of editorials is you kind of almost get to the impact on the taxpayer. You could almost call it a one percent impact on a million dollars a year or something like that. But we never really spell out what this means to the average single-family tax bill. And I think that would be, it's a great management tool, but as we go further with this, I think we need to spell out what it is it means to the taxpayers. The other, it's it's a nitpick, I'll admit it, but some of the things that are in your capital plan, I don't believe are capital by DOR definitions or anything else. I would point to funding a sustainability position or some of the studies. And I'm a bit of a purist on this kind of stuff. And and so not really an accountant, but I play a lot on the finance committee. So I I'd like to see it a little bit more cleaner in terms of what what we consider capital, what we don't. And the other thing, you know, I don't want to get into trying to define free cash or free cash policies or free cash reserve studies, but I have trouble with free cash as a source of funds, especially as a predictable source of funds, because if Barrow's here, and I don't think he is, he tell me, he can't tell me what the free cash is going to be at the end of this year, never mind in twenty thirty. So free cash is 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 a calculation. It's not a source of funds. I understand the strategy you're you're saying is we're going to plan to budget to generate free cash, which we will spend. But again, if I get to be nitpicking and purist, it's not a source of funds. You know, there's only two, it's only really two sources of funds in this exercise, the taxpayers' money and other people's money. And that's kind of the way I define it. Like I said, these are editorials. Substantively, it does reflect our community priorities and values, but to the best of my knowledge, there was no community input. In our past, failed attempts to do this kind of stuff, we did, it was a combined staff, community exercise. And and I think this one would have would benefit from. So now, it depends on what your objective is. If I was the town manager, I would think this is a great report. But I'm on the finance committee. So I think for the the entire community, yeah, it 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 needs a little bit, it could be a little bit more robust in in some areas. And yeah, maybe, John, you're intending to to get more socialization of the report and and get more comment. But overall, I thought it was well done.
Anyone else from the finance committee?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Hi, Adam Oldy speaking for FinCom. I just wanted to ask if this Skype is intended now to become a living document that's going to be published and annually updated so that, you know, the board, the FinCom, the town, and the townsfolk can constantly refer to it to track and see how the the projects are progressing and what things are being added to and taken off of it. Is it intended to be a living document in that way?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. And excellent work and presentation. Thank you so much.
Jason, did I see your hand going up there?
Yes, two quick questions. The first one, just to follow on from what Mr. Noon said about using a million dollars a year in free cash a couple of years from now. We're already in a situation where free cash has been declining. Isn't this just going to hasten the time until we need to have a an override to be able to generate this kind of free cash? And then I have a second question after that. But we're already, we're already at the point where we're right at the limit of what we can use for free cash in this in this current fiscal year. So you know, I fully understand why you want to have a an automatic inflation adjustment for a for a for a capital improvement. But if we're already struggling to meet the current, the current expenditures, how do we anticipate filling that coffer?
So thank you. That the one million mark is reached ten years from now. And that's just a projection, and it's an estimate. And I think maybe it'd be helpful to, if Sarah or Tony could talk more about why we why we do these projections and and targets and and how they are not rigid and and how that works into a ten-year planning process.
So Tony may want to jump in here. So I'll let, give him a minute to unmute himself. But free cash is really one of the best sources for capital because it is a one-time revenue and and one-time revenues are best used for one-time expenses. And so I would say that to, you know, to John's answer, I I agree, ten years is is sort of a long time in the future. I mean, and for free cash, certainly, I think the financial team should be watching how much free cash you generate so that you can ideally generate, you know, three to five percent of your budget in free cash to to allow for some of these things and and provide some flexibility for the town. But it is a living document to 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 Adam's point. It's a living document. It's one that has to be revisited every year because things do change. You may find that that you don't expect anymore to be able to generate free cash.
What are they doing in the garden?
That that you need to adjust it downward. And that's okay. It just means that that you look at the plan and making sure that you make adjustments on the project side to account for a reduction in resources. Tony, did you want to add anything to to that?
Just to highlight your your comment about one-time expenditures. And now there is, there is flexibility in deferring some of these one-time expenditures. So as as the town progresses over the over the years, you have a a a plan that recognizes basically how you generate free cash. So I think if the town continues on a on a plan not to overestimate revenues, which is a a negative trend. which is a, a negative trend, I'd say, uh, it's up to the town and, and, you know, the cooperation of the Selectment Finance Committee would watch the estimates that are used in planning the operating budgets. And the other, the other flip side of generating, uh, free cash is, um, is, uh, budgetary expenditures. So the town would, you know, each year would look at its year-end closing, what happens on June thirtieth, when, when the town looks at, uh, the actual revenues it collects versus the budget and expenditures made versus the expenditure budget. So if, uh, the, the, the negative impact is the town kind of changes its practice of, of, uh, stretching its budgeting practice on using, uh, more and more revenues to support the operating budget. So some of it's within the control of, of the town, uh, certainly on, on what may, what one picture might be of free cash. Um, uh, it's really a policy question. Uh, and, and the other side of using free cash for capital projects is, uh, be- because this list is, is, um, is really a, a very long-term projection. Uh, as Sarah mentioned, it, it's ten years, costs are going to change, project's gonna move, move in terms of priority. Uh, it's much easier to defer some of these smaller, and they typically are smaller, uh, capital projects, uh, in the list that Kara has in the CIP document. Those projects that are funded from free cash tend to be smaller. So as each year, should there be a bump in the road, either, and then the bump could be a high point or could be a low point, I mean, it could be a year when you have more free cash. So each, each year, uh, as, as, uh, uh, one of you would ask earlier, this, this plan is updated annually. And when it's updated, you actually have the results of the end of the previous fiscal year. In other words, the plan's updated in, in, um, uh, late fall, uh, early winter, you have the June thirty results. But you, so instead of, uh, uh, you know, conjecture on what, what that free cash number may be for that year, you actually, you actually know. So gives you the opportunity to make adjustments, uh, each year that are financially necessary. And still keep, and still keep moving those projects forward in, in looking into the future. So it's a, it's a plan, not the plan, I think is what I would phrase it.
I'm not questioning the sagacity of using free cash for capital projects. I mean, I'm questioning the existence of the free cash to use towards those projects. Uh, and then one other thing that I'm just a little confused about, and maybe I'll have to take this offline and learn a little more about it. You have in your recommendation that your plan is to get to the point where you use about one percent of the net budget for non-excluded debt. That would actually represent a decrease of what we've been doing for the last five years. So that's, again, that's, that sounds wonderful, but considering what we've been doing, I, I don't see how you write that shit, how you make that, make that turn. So I must, I must not totally understand the recommendation there. So I'll, uh, I'll just put a pin in that and say, someone please educate me afterwards on this. Thank you.
I would also like someone to educate me when you educate Jason about that. Um, anyone else? Mike?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mike, can you be louder, or, or are other people having a hard time hearing him?
You hear me now?
No, we can't.
No? Uh, it's, that's easy.
You're, you're not muted, it's just super, super faint.
No, Mike, yeah, now, now you're muted. But a- actually, go back to the way it was and just talk loudly.
We can't hear you at all now. Uh, let's go with Dave and see if we can get back to Mike.
Yeah, you know, my, my question might be more for John, but just to, in general, and I apologize if I missed it, but, you know, are, are you assigning different priorities to each of these areas and specifically, you know, is there like a high, you know, must-have? And I, I know these aren't nice to haves, it sounds like, but, you, you know, just given what we discussed around free cash flow and, you know, just the, the vagaries of the budget a few years out, um, how, how is the town looking at prioritizing this list, um, on an annual basis? And I'm really thinking, you know, must-haves versus, you know, we'd really like to have this, but we can put it off two years, sort of, sort of thinking.
So, uh, thank you. So part of the process is to first understand what the department's need, and those needs are, are based on their professional expertise and their operations that they run for the town. And knowing that they're gonna ask for things that they need, not things that, that, just that they want. Um, so with that consideration, and then we look very closely at the Board of Selectment Policy Direction. Uh, the Board of Selectment does goal-setting every June or, or so. And in those goal-setting sessions, there are priorities outlined, both for short-term and for long-term, and all of our capital investments, uh, have tracked pretty closely with, with what those priorities, um, point to. And we would continue to use that as our, um, as our way to help prioritize things. And then it's just a matter of, um, finding how many of the things that we know we need that are aligned with priorities that we can actually afford in a given year. And then that's what we bring forward.
Great, thanks for that. And then my other comment is just more of a source of funds, um, maybe for what the board is selecting to consider is, you know, we've talked about some of the town properties, and I know that was listed in this document as a potential use of, or a potential way to generate funds to, to, to fund some of this. Is, you know, it would be good to see a, a list of, you know, what are the properties that the town owns? And I'm thinking a lot of, you know, some of those stuff that may not be used very heavily by the town, town people, and just, you know, could that be, you know, u- used, used towards this, towards this, uh, capital improvement, right, plan as well? So that's it from there.
Anyone else have FinCom? Mike, you wanna try again? No.
Could I respond to some of the questions that came up?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Um, I, I'll, I'll start from the, the back and, uh, and work backward. Start from the end and work backwards. So, um, first of all, there is a list of assets in the report, um, all the facilities that are, that are owned by the town. Actually, every single vehicle is all listed in, in the beginning of the report. So that's a pretty good resource if folks wanna understand the sort of scope of capital access that the town owns. Um, to the question about the one percent debt target, the one percent debt target is only for non-excluded debt. So in fact, it's not less than you have been spending because it's only for that portion of the debt. So you have excluded debt, um, that is, that is above and beyond the one percent. But again, excluded debt is a little bit different because not only are you spending money, but you're raising the exact same amount. So, so in some ways, um, it, it, we, we treat it separately. So the one percent target for non-excluded debt is actually, um, a small increase each year. Um, and going even further back, there was a question about the use of free cash, and, and I don't wanna belabor the point, but, but I, I also will say that there are some places that, that determine that, you know, rather than free cash, we may wanna have other reserves at our, um, available to us, uh, whether it's from a, a stabilization fund, in particular, capital stabilization fund. So you may find that in the future, or in some future years, you use another reserve, uh, source for these one-time expenses. And then just going one more, um, uh, one more answer I wanna give, or response I wanna give has to do with public input. So public input, very important, um, when you're, when you're, uh, managing a municipality, of course. Um, and to John, John's made this point a couple of times, and I wanna reiterate it. The CIP, um, is built upon the community's values and goals and other strategic planning processes. All of those processes, most likely, a- a- and I think that this is true, had very robust public participation, whether it's through, um, the elections to the board, whether it's through, uh, developing an open space and recreation plan, or whether it's through the, the climate action plan. So all of that public participation feeds into these other plans. And then, then we take those plans and say, how do we manage the municipality to co- to, to accomplish these goals? What capital assets do we need? So in some ways, um, a- and I think the most important ways, there has been a lot of public participation, setting the foundation for building the CIP. And that's it.
Um, are you gonna try it one more time, Mike? Can't hear you. Um, I, one request I would have, uh, as Sarah just alluded to, we actually spent a fair amount of time this year, uh, for the Finance Committee defining a policy specific relative to free cash, separate from our, the capital stabilization fund we have. Um, so I would love the plan to either state expenditures from both of those, assuming that we can come up. We're just in early thinking about, um, ways to replenish the stabilization fund. But if we could even just change it from saying free cash to reserves, which I know is sort of a wishy-washy word, but it, I think will in some ways clarify things. For, within our discussions, free cash means a very specific thing, and we actually have broader resources for this. Um, I have a question about why the target for, um, specific operating budget spending is kept at such a stable level. It's not maintained as a percentage as the budget goes up.
Uh, uh, so basically, that was, you know, this is our first year doing a ten-year plan, and there are a lot of things that we tried to figure out, uh, out of the gate. Uh, that was one that, uh, you know, I think we wanna continue to evaluate how best to, to use that source in the future. I think as a standard, we just said, why don't we just keep it flat for now? And we can, that's certainly something we're gonna continue to look at. That's the, the s- straight answer.
Uh, thank you. And, um, one more question, which I'm, I'm sure the answer to this is yes, but what sort of integration or, um, planning do we have around coordination for projects such as this, um, such as occurring there with the roadways, relative to outside entities such as the water district and utilities?
So we have a pretty good relationship with, um, the water district, obviously, but we also communicate regularly with our utilities, the, the gas and the electric, uh, uh, public utilities that work in town. And I think having a plan like this is gonna only improve the way that we communicate our long-term plans. So, uh, it's, the existing relationships, I think, will, will be even more productive now that we have a plan like this.
I- is there a form in which we can transmit this information to them so that utilities and other people who would be potentially taking up the road will know, okay, we have a project coming two years down the line, or not? Or is it just, uh, we talk to them when we know we have something coming?
The operations teams in both organizations talk regularly, uh, both about, you know, day-to-day and year-to-year plans, but also I think maybe formally sharing this, uh, is a good suggestion, uh, with the water district, for example. Uh, but I, I s- I think most of the things that are in here, they, they're, uh, aware of.
Um, uh, Jason, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, John, we're even not done. Jason, go ahead.
Just a quick, uh, following question about source of funding. Uh, are you also taking into account, uh, potential CPC funds, uh, as, uh, sources of revenues for some of these, uh, for some of these projects?
So that's a good question, and it came up a few times, actually, since I pub- since we published the report earlier this month. And the CPA funds are, uh, are very, um, defined in how they're spent by the community. And it's really a, a community-based decision. And as much as I would love to, uh, recommend how we use that funding, it's not something that I can recommend. Uh, there, there's an established committee made up of, uh, volunteers that annually do a public hearing to assess all the needs of the community, and then they, to have a very robust process that they're in the middle of right now to determine how to align those needs with the funding available. So as, even though it is a source of funding that has been used to help support a lot of projects that the town, uh, wants to do, it's not something that, um, I was, uh, interested in including in, in a recommendation for a ten-year capital investment plan. I mean, maybe there's a way we can work that in the future, but I wouldn't do it without having a long conversation with CPC to make sure that they support the idea. Thank you.
Roland.
See, since I chaired that committee for a couple of years, and John Benson was on the committee too as well, and I were on there together. But the town has come to CPC, as John and Girardi said, for funding in the past, and I'm sure you'll still go to the CPC when you find a project that fits within the definition of the CPA guidelines, as, as John said, they are very stringent, they, you can't just, you can't use it to pay off debt, you know, stuff like that. You can, but you can use it as a mechanism, like when you wanna buy open space, or you're gonna pay off the bonding of open space that you acquired through CPA legislation. Thing also to keep in mind is at the time, we decided that, hey, we don't, we don't want CPA anymore, and they voted out. Any projects that were bonded through CPA would still be liable, you'd still be, uh, you'd still have a CPA surcharge on your taxes until that project is paid off. In other words, we bought Wright Hill, we take money out of CPA every year to pay the bond on that. If we disbanded CPA, say, this year at town meeting for some reason, we still owe, I don't know, I think you have twelve years on that bonding still? You still have CPA for twelve years to pay off that bonding. Same thing with the recent acquisition on Piper, that, uh, Great Hill. So I'm sure the town will, as they deem necessary, come to CPA to fund capital that fits within that definition.
Um, Sarah, if you could please bring up your slideshow on the, um, slide where you show the existing general fund capital investments for the various years. It, it looks like, I mean, it says, unless I'm reading entirely wrong, that for two thousand eighteen, um, non-excluded capital investment as a percent of net budget was one point four-four percent. Um, and that for two thousand twenty-one, that's one point nine percent. I think this is really due to what Jason was.
Yeah. This slide?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So this one point four-four percent is the total non-excluded capital investment as a percent of net budget, but it includes not only non-excluded debt, but also monies from free cash and tax levy.
Okay, so when, um, if we looked at two thousand twenty-two, I think was on the next slide? Um, so when that says, oh, that is below one percent.
This is below one percent, correct.
Uh, Jason, does that address what you were wondering about?
I will look into it more and make sure that I fully understand it.
Thank you. Um, I, any more questions from FinCom, or should we ha- hand it over? Alright, John Benson, it's yours.
Yeah, um, questions and comments from the Board of Selectment, please. Uh, Joan?
Is it realistic to keep the town budget stable over that ten-year period? The operating budget?
In the plan, the operating budget, the net operating budget grows at three point six-four percent annually, and that's simply a projection based on the historical growth from the, the four years prior. So there is an estimate of growth built in, it's not stable.
Thank you.
Are there more questions and comments from board members? Uh, Jim?
Um, so I noticed that I have some questions on process, which is what most of the questions have been about, and some about the content. And I, I guess I would look to you, to, to either John or John for guidance. Uh, is this an appropriate forum for comments on the, the content, the particular things that are in the capital plan? Or would you like to focus this meeting on, um, the process by which the plan is calculated and carried forward?
Joan?
I think we should do both.
Okay, great. Um, so I'll run through this. Um, so the first is, um, this is related to the question about CPA, but it's really more a question about the recreation aspect. Um, so, uh, we have a bunch of facilities such as, you know, our, our, our fields and, uh, playgrounds that traditionally, uh, have been upgraded, um, you know, maybe a little bit, eventually they get upgraded, um, by a combination of private fund-braces.
eventually they get upgraded, um, by a combination of private fundraising and CPA money. Now, the, the town itself has, has, has rarely put a bunch of cash into that. And that, and that, and that trend continues. Um, there are some investments in, you know, parking areas and a bunch of NARA investments. Um, but very little, uh, on, on the, on the, on the, you know, playgrounds and rec areas. And, um, i- it goes along with the trend where, uh, the rec department activities themselves tend to be a, a, as if they're operating in a, in a, in an enterprise fund, in the sense that, uh, they get very, very little funding from the town and are asked to cover things by fees and by donations. Um, and I wonder if we're hitting the, the edges of that strategy no longer working. Um, this year and last year, we have more CPA requests for recreation than the CPA can fund. Um, so I see, uh, i- if that continues, I see that we may need to have more, uh, more re- recreation upgrades, uh, in the capital plan. Um, and I, I wonder if there are any other, you know, I just wanted to put that out as a concern. Uh, there might be thoughts about that among the board members or the FinCom members or, or by you, John.
Well, I'll, I'll start. Um, so the rec and through the land use, um, department, uh, for which they're part of, did request funding for capital projects related to rec, maintaining rec facilities. Many of those didn't make it into the plan. Uh, part of the reason for that is that we do often, um, find ways to fund those otherwise, whether it's through CPC applications or through other grants, uh, that we've been successful in getting in earmarks. So, uh, you know, if there was policy direction to start putting more rec into, um, our capital plans, I would certainly, uh, will consider that going forward. It just hasn't been the practice, um, to date.
Thank you. Um, I guess my starting comment on that question, because I think the board, the boards to talk about it is, um, I think we either want to go in the direction of, uh, increasing the, the CPC percentage. Right now it's at one and a half and, and consider increasing it to a larger number. Um, because we're also up against some limits on, um, you know, potential open space projects, uh, that we've been, purchases that we've been considering, and we said, ah, well, it seems like there isn't really the resources to do this. So I would say either we should be discussing increasing the CP, the CPC percentage or, uh, uh, adding rec funding, uh, to the, uh, the operating budget. And I don't have a, uh, uh, I don't have a well-developed thought on which one makes sense, but I think it's a conversation we need to have. Um, let's see. Um, oh, in, oh, in terms of, this is a particular content thing. I see there are a bunch of, um, you know, vehicle upgrades. As you said, there's a lot of vehicles. Um, they're, they're all going to need to be replaced, uh, you know, eventually. And I really appreciate that you have some of them as, um, you know, electric upgrades. Um, and, uh, I guess I want, just wanted to put a plug in for, uh, so to speak, um, for more of those more quickly. If we're going to hit our targets, uh, for a net zero by 2030, we need to be having a lot more of the vehicles going electric. Uh, and I would remind us that, um, electric vehicles have lower maintenance costs because they're simpler. Uh, the equipment tends to last longer because you don't have to deal with, uh, you know, having fuel come in and explode and be at high temperatures inside the vehicle. Um, and of course, the fuel costs are lower. So in addition to the, uh, to the contribution to the sustainability effort, I think it is an appropriate long-term investment if we look at the, uh, you know, the reduced operating costs and reduced fuel costs. Um, there was that, that little pitch. Um, a couple of process questions. Um, I think I'll ask them at the same time. Um, what's the best role for committees during the capital plan cycle? Um, besides the FinCom and, and, and the Select Board? Um, and what's the, how do you see the relationship between the ALG process and the, the capital plan updates?
Well, um, I'll start with the ALG one. Uh, so the ALG process is something that w- we do here with the school district and finance committee Selectmen, and it looks at revenues and expenses that are projected. The capital planning process in the past has always just been a part of the budget process. And in this year, i- the same thing happened. We presented our budget the next day. I mean, we presented our budget and the capital plan basically on the same day, or within 24 hours. And, you know, there, there may be discussions we have about doing that a little bit differently in the future. Uh, but that's how i- it was this year. And this year, timing was a little bit off because of, we delayed town meeting and everything kind of shifted because of that. But I think in a normal year, uh, it would probably work out okay. Uh, but I think we should continue to discuss timing and, and how, you know, the more, the more discussion and feedback I've been getting about this plan over the last three weeks, the more I think it might make sense to try to release this before, um, the town manager's recommended budget. But, you know, that's something that we're, we're going to have to regroup and get feedback from all of you on. And, um, we can maybe make that adjustment going forward. And, and then the question about, uh, boards and committees. Um, as Sarah mentioned, uh, a lot of the work of the boards and committees is, is, um, incorporated into strategic plans and other policy documents that we have and that we've incorporated into our, uh, capital planning process. And, you know, that's something that we can make sure is even more, uh, known that, you know, if there's things that you're recommending as a committee, make sure that we have the report. I mean, for the most case, we do. Uh, and then board of selectmen, of course, would also be the ones that we look to for, if, if they support that recommendation, then we find a way to make it work into the, into the capital plan. And I think we did that, uh, in every, everywhere possible, um, in this plan. And, and it is a living and working document. We want to continue to improve it every year. And this is definitely an area where we can, um, do more next year.
Thanks, that's all my questions.
Okay. Uh, Dean?
I think the, uh, the capital plan is, it's an excellent document. I worked a lot on the facilities portions of, of previous plans, um, in my pre- previous life, and this is a nice upgrade from all that. So my compliments there. Want to address a couple of the issues that have been raised about CPC. Uh, as, as you know, I'm the Selectmen's representative on the, uh, Community Preservation Committee. And especially the recreation portion of it. Uh, that certainly comes up at CPC meetings from time to time that that CPC seems to be the only source of funds for recreation projects or major recreation projects. Um, that was certainly the case for many years. I think recently, we've had, through the town manager, we've had some really good luck getting some state grants and earmarks to complete some of the work, for instance, up at NARA. So it's, it's not quite as, as lopsided as you might think, um, because we do have some other sources of funds that, that, uh, the manager's been able to leverage. But to the bigger issue of, of recreation, um, I'm a little skeptical of the huge number of recreation projects that have come forward. Um, because I think people might, in the recreation world, might have some unrealistic ideas as to how much money there is to be spent there. I think some of the projects might be just a little bit overblown. So, you know, you can only go to the well so many times. To Jim's point about, should we put more money in the town's capital plan for recreation? Or should we continue to go for CPC and should we go to a 3% CPC surcharge? Either way, this is a tax increase. Um, yeah, there's no magic here at all. If you increase the surcharge from CPC or CPA, maybe you might be able to get a little bit more of a state match, but there's so many towns getting CPA that I don't think that's a realistic expectation that we're going to get a huge benefit from that. So basically, what we're down to is whichever, whether you're taking it out of your right pocket or your left pocket, it's our tax dollars that are being used for these recreation projects. So I think we have to look at some very serious discussions. How many recreation facilities do we need? How many people use them? Um, you know, what's the total benefit for the town? And how much more can you bump up the tax rate? Either the general tax rate or the CPA surcharge? And, uh, now it's, there's, there's no mystery there. And if you decide, okay, we need to put more money into recreation, and we don't want to raise the taxes, then, okay, we take money out of libraries, fire police, you know, take your pick. But I think, that was a bottom-line dollar, and I think that a lot of people are feeling very stressed by the high tax rate and active. We get great value for it. But, you know, you, you can only bleed the animal so many times. Thank you.
Uh, further comments from board members? Okay, Christie, if you'd like to call on people generally.
Sure, thank you. Um, I see Steve Noon.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to, uh, one of Jim's comments. Um, there are towns that have a separate capital planning or capital appropriation committee. Uh, I, I'm not sure we need another committee in this town, but that is a, a method that, um, some towns use. And, and they would review the plan before the budget cycle. Um, you know, I mean, John Mandrati, yeah, this is the first year, so timing, uh, wasn't going to do you any favors. So, yeah, typically you'd like to see the capital plan before the, the budget. But, um, we started down the co- joint committee a few years ago. We had a, um, uh, committee that had finance, um, committee, town staff, school staff, school committee, board of selectmen representative, and a couple of community, uh, people at large. Um, that committee gets some work done, but then, um, in the superintendent and incident, though, we won't talk about, most of the membership of that committee was no longer either in the town, employed by the town, or active in the town. So, um, what we were taking recognition of is, um, in this town, the taxpayer only gets one tax bill. So to Dean's point about, and a lot of people think it's getting high, you, you, it, there's, there's another party that spends capital money in town that goes on the same tax bill. And you need, you need some effort to coordinate with them too. Yeah, thank you very much.
Roland.
We did an amazing study committee, I was on it, in finance, on raising the CPA to 3%. And we gave a recommendation at the time, and nothing happened. So, you know, people are aggravated that, that their taxes weren't applied that last year due to reevaluations, et cetera. New schools, new fire station. You know, and school building and the fire station are two projects I highly supported, and we'd do it again today. Somewhere we desperately need. One of my things, um, going back to Jim's comment on electric vehicles and things, how many vehicles do we really need in town hall? I see a lot of them out there that sit there and haven't moved in weeks. You know, could the town employee use their, if they have to make a, a run to the senior center from town hall? They take, they take a town car. Well, why can't we just pay them miles? They go back and forth with their car. You know, um, I go to work, I get a, my company's not giving me a car. Um, we get nobody a car out there in our company. Um, cars are a big expense. We have to pay insurance on them, we have to pay, uh, we don't pay excise taxes, we, we, we just go right back in our pocket. But there is a cost to them, there is a cost of maintenance. So my thing is that we need to study to know exactly what we have for vehicles, and how many do we really need? If we have a vehicle that's sitting there at town hall and doesn't get moved for six months, that's a complete waste of money. Can other departments, it, how many does the building department need? Do they, can they share some with planner, or what, whatever, however it could be devised? Where maybe you have a third less cars and you have to check one out and it's coordinated through the clerk's office or something. I don't know. But I think that really needs to be studied to see how many we really need versus, great to have them sitting around and somebody needs one, but there's one of them out there that's a pickup truck with a windshield wipers. I was going to put it down in the windshield later and notice the whole windshield wipers falling apart. Um, obviously, it tells me it hasn't been maintained. It hasn't moved in a long time. So that's the things I'd like the town to consider, and that, I think that's with all departments. I've just told them, and Austin's thing of getting rid of users, women that we didn't need anymore, raising money last year was great. I think maybe we need to do that every couple of years.
Mr. Martin?
I, I just wanted to make the, the point of order that we have the school building presentation, we're a little bit overdue on already. So, can the, end the agenda.
Thank you. Um, unless anyone else wants to jump in right now, let's go ahead. Um, Mr. Benson, would you like to take back?
Um, okay, um, we have the, our second agenda item is an update on the, uh, twin school building project, and we have Mary Brolin and Peter Light here. So, Mary, let's turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Superintendent Light, and I would like to thank you for, um, letting us join you this evening to give you an update. I'm going to just share my screen so you can see the presentation. Over here. So this slide is just a reminder of all the people on the committee. I'm not going to go through it, but I believe you have a copy of these slides, so, so you know who's on. What we'd like to do this evening is give you an update on where we are in the process and the timeline, give you an update on the budget, and then share some design and progress images. So for the timeline, uh, you'll recall that the approval for the funds was given in December of 2019. Many of you helped us educate the community about this, and I thank you all for that support. We subsequently hired the construction manager at risk in February of 2020 and ultimately finished the designs in October and got the guaranteed maximum price in December of 2020. We've started building. If you go down on the site, there's a lot of steel going up, and it's pretty exciting to see. Um, the expectation is the facade will be done by January of 2022 and will be the, in the building occupied with students in the building August of 2022. And then there will be, um, demolishing of the existing Douglas and Gates buildings and abatement that happens and expected to be all done by June of 2023. This is the budget. In the middle column is the approved budget, and then on the right is the post-GMP budget. And so, um, important lines to look at is the project budget. We estimated it 113 million, and it's coming in at 110.8 million. Um, and that adds two lines, the construction budget and change orders to date. The change orders to date are quite high, but that's because we went out for an early bid package and everything wasn't specified yet. So if we had waited and gone out for, with the full, full package, we, it would have been in the line of the 110 million. There's no change orders that are, we're adding new things on that we didn't originally want. Um, so it's just the way it happens when you go out for an early bid. So this difference between the 113 million that was estimated and the 110 million is about 2.5 million. At this time, the school building committee has voted to hold that 2.5 million in the owner's contingency line. So you'll see that's up at 4.0, 4.1 million versus the 1.6 planned. That's because it's still pretty early in the game, and we don't want to say there's definitely a, a lower price tag on this till we know what's going to happen. Um, but we are hoping that we are going to ultimately come in under budget. This is a graphic of the outside of the building. So this is the front entrance right here, and on the left would be the Gates administration. On the right, the Douglas administration. And this is a graphic of the back of the building. And this lower building in the back on the left is the cafeteria. And the, the larger part of the building is an L, and in the crux of the L, in the elbow, is the media center, uh, and that has glass windows and just a, it's going to have a gorgeous view out onto the wetlands. It's just a very beautiful piece of property. Uh, through our process of getting to the guaranteed maximum price, we did do a fair amount of value engineering, but I just want to say that we have maintained our commitment to sustainability and a triple net zero design through all of that. This is the layout of the building, and I want to show this to you so you get your orientation. And then we're going to go kind of into the building. And so at And so at the top of the L on the first floor are the preschool classrooms. We come around to the elbow where it's the main entrance and administration. And then going down the bottom to the right of the L is the, we call it the small gym and the large gym. And then in the back is the cafeteria. If we go on the upper floors, both floors are similar in their design and their layout. And so it starts with kindergarten moves to first grade and second grade, and then into third and fourth. In the entrance L on the upper floor are music and art rooms. And then we have in the back, the fifth and sixth grade classrooms. And in the middle, we have the media center. So again, this is the front of the building. And now we're going to go in the front door. And as we come in the front door, we look right at the learning commons. It's a place where kids can sit. It's tiered seating. And it can be used for education, for entertainment, things like that. I guarantee you that that is not an echo chamber above the way we have in the junior high school. From this view, we're now at the back of the learning common and looking straight out to the front door. This is the front door here. And up on our right is the stairs that go to the upper floors. This is the entrance to a classroom. And in this entrance way, there are benches for kids to sit on. There are cubbies for their boots and shoes and pegs to hold coats and backpacks. And on the right side, there's actually two sets of sinks. And one of them's, well, it's required by MSBA to have these. Above that, there are cabinets for storage for the teachers. And then we, wrong way, sorry, we move into the classroom. And this is, we have not yet bought furniture. And so this is not necessarily exactly how it's going to be designed, but this is a rendering of what it could be. You know, desk tables and chairs for the students. The teacher would be somewhere over here, whiteboards on this side and on this side. And this door here is, leads to a small space that each classroom will share, two classrooms will share between them for small group learning. Take place there. And this is another view, and you can see the really nice open windows going out, in this case, onto the wetland view again. This is the hallway outside a classroom. So taking advantage of all the space, there's even learning opportunities in the hallways. There's tables where kids can sit and work and whiteboards and different seating options available. This is the media center. So this is the first floor of the media center. But the first floor of the media center is on the second floor of the building. And you can see that there's small group learning spaces. There's little cubbies where kids can kind of get cozy with their reading and all of the stacks. And when we move around, we can see there's different kinds of spaces for kids to be working in while they're in school. This is still the first floor, different spaces. And then upstairs is the second floor of the media center. And again, it has different, it's got educational spaces for groups and for individuals and things like that with the stacks. This is the cafeteria. This is what it would look like for one of the schools. And then we can open up that wall and see the other half of the cafeteria for the other school and the glass windows with views again out onto the wetlands. And on the right, you can see there's steps and that's to a stage area. On the left, we'll have an area where performances can take place. It's, we're thinking of it as a black box space because we couldn't build two stages and get reimbursement for it from MSBA. This is a overview, a layout of all the buildings. And so Building A is where the gyms are and the back work of the cafeteria. So the kitchen itself is in that. Building B has the entrance. It has the administrative building, administrative offices upstairs is art and music. There's a multipurpose room on the first floor and the learning commons. Building C has the preschool. And then on the upper floors, it's the younger grades that are in that. And then Building D is the cafeteria. And so this is looking out onto the wetlands. You can see this red line is, I believe, the boardwalk over to the Douglas property. And the main entrance comes here where the bright green line is. The buses will turn around and come back out. And then parent drop off will be over here. We will have separated bus and parent traffic. So here's some photos. They're a few weeks old now because I wanted to get you this presentation early. But this is some of the drilling for the geothermal wells. We, I believe, we're putting in 67 wells and we're a third of the ways, a third of them are completely done. Others are drilled but not yet sealed and some still to be drilled. This is some of the steel going up. So this is Building A with the gyms. This is Building B coming around the corner to the entrance. And then at the time we had done it, Building C, when Building C was the concrete slabs. But if you go down now, you'll see that the steel is going up on that side as well. This is a really cool aerial view. So again, the piece that looks very complete is building, well, not complete, but much more work on it, is Building A, Building B, the entrance, Building C, the preschool. And then D will be here. It's not yet. And so that's everything. If you have any questions, we'd love to hear them.
So questions from both groups, please? Roland, go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are there any accommodations made for disabled kids?
Yes, it will be a fully compliant building. There are two elevators in the building. The entrance ways will all be accessible. I'm sure when they do furniture, they're going to think about any needs in that area. There will be, I believe, equipment in every classroom for people who are hearing impaired. Yes, so it will be fully accessible.
Further questions or comments?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, well, Mary and Peter, thank you very much for that.
One second, John. Jim had his hand up.
Jim?
Oh, I'm wondering what the surprises have been, the surprises have been during the construction process.
Ledge!
Yeah, you said a bit about the ledge?
Yeah, you know, I'm a resident of Foxborough and I have already said we should rename it to Roxborough. But now that I see it's in Acton too. There's a great deal of ledge under the property. We had drilled ahead of time. But our, our construction team has shown us diagrams where the ledge waves under the ground. So where they tested, they happened to hit the places where the ledge was deep. And so we had to relocate the septic system because of the ledge. And you may have heard that we are, we've made a decision very recently to blast on some of the driveway. It'll be from kind of where the front entrance is halfway down toward Building A. Because there's just too much to drill. And for your information, we have done a neighborhood meeting that was very well attended. There are the neighbors all have gotten letters. They could volunteer to be on an email list for updates and they can volunteer to share their cell phones. So they'll get, the way the blasts are going to happen, they'll be twice a day, once around 11, I think they said, and once around 1. And there'll be like an air horn sound that says five minutes and then one minute. And then the blast will happen. And then a third sound for all clear. And so they can get a text message that says it's five minutes away, I think, is what they get. So the neighbors have been, they had questions, but it was very bibble. People are very understanding. So, and, and really, you know, if you think about it, we're blasting right next to the new building we're building. And it's already up. And so we have as much at stake as they do about keeping it a really contained blast and, you know, really maintaining it. And they, it's amazing the way they cover it. And so I expect it's going to go well. And the blasting that we heard on Friday night was for Devon's. And not the school project.
Thank you.
Okay, so any last comments or questions? Again, Mary and Peter, thank you very much for the evening's presentation.
Thank you.
So that would conclude our agenda. We, we are scheduled to meet again jointly for the annual budget Saturday workshop on Tuesday, April 6th at 6:00 PM. And the select board will meet next Monday night, April, April 5th. We have an executive session at 6:30. So Christie, if you'd like to close your end of the meeting, adjourn your end of the meeting.
Thank you. Esha, do you have a motion?
If there's a motion, I'll be adjourned this meeting.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Let's vote for it. Steve?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Hey, we can hear you. Sahana?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Roland? Dave? Adam?
Hi.
And I say aye.
Okay, so from the board of selectmen's side, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Joan moves.
I'll second.
David seconds. David, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Tater Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I say aye. So we're adjourned.
Okay, good evening.
Good night, everyone.
See you all soon.
Bye.